Rule call 1.1, welcome to rule call. Call to order, welcome to rule call.
Weigle?
Here.
Scottler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Veen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, under item two, discussion items. Item 2.0, request to transfer class four food and beverage alcohol beverage license from Sumo Japanese Steakhouse doing business as Fuji Japanese Steakhouse to Fuji Japanese Steakhouse Seafood and Steakhouse, Inc. Doing business as Fuji Japanese Seafood and Steakhouse. This is Dorstek, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. The Finance Department has received an application to transfer the class four license from Sumo Japanese Steakhouse, which does business as Fuji Japanese Steakhouse, to Fuji Japanese Seafood and Steakhouse. This is located at 715 South Washington. The transfer has been requested and the application fee has been paid. The related information is attached to your staff report. This does require approval of City Council for the transfer of this alcoholic beverage license, and it is, of course, subject to inspection and approval of the various departments that are listed in your staff report. But if this meets your approval, we would just request that you move this forward to City Council for approval.
Any comments, questions, Ms. Weber?
I'll move approval that we recommend passage or second.
Move approval by Weber, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, motion. Aye. Thank you, Ken, he approves.
All right, thank you.
Item 2.1, CDBG CV funding round three. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. This was discussed briefly last Monday, and it was announced that Grand Forks has been awarded another $298,000 from HUD, the HUD CARES Act funding, or CDBG CV. At the meeting last Monday, there was discussion about uses of this funding, kind of in the context of other CARES Act funding through the state. Obviously, there are lots of unmet needs, health department, school district, this money could be used for that, as opposed to how the last round was allocated through our kind of traditional competitive allocation process. There was also discussion about the opportunity to fund mental health matters. Originally, there was some thought that that would be funded through the school district, but in actuality, that's more of a community-wide effort, not really affiliated with the school district. So what we're asking for tonight basically is input and guidance on how council would like to prioritize these funds. No action, but with your feedback, then staff will work through our standard CDBG allocation process to kind of refine your input into actual fundable projects that would then come back to you at a later date.
Any comments or questions from Ms. Richards? Mr. Weber?
The staff report notes that the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, will be meeting between now and then, and they will be asked for their input in the process.
Correct. And feedback on recommendations from this group would be taken to that committee, obviously, and their input would then be brought back to this group.
Normally, the process is that they give us feedback for us to consider, but we're kind of flipping that on its head because of the short turnaround here.
Exactly, and the discussion last week of the community needs. HUD doesn't have a really tight timeline in terms of a requirement, but they have made it simpler for us to get these funds allocated very quickly, shortening required comment periods. So that's our goal, knowing that the need is out there in the community, to get some input on how to best get this spent quickly and effectively.
The Citizens Advisory Committee, from my perspective, is such an essential part of this process. There's a tendency for the city to think of this as our money. These are federal funds that come to us for very specific purposes, and one of the guidelines since the creation of these funds in the 1970s was that representative members of the community have an important voice in directing the use of these funds. I recognize that this is a unique situation, but I'd be asking for their recommendations other than our recommendation that something be designed to move forward as quickly as possible. I'm primarily interested in their recommendations for where these should be spent. You've given us a few major possibilities, priorities, and you'll be presenting those to the CAC. Those priorities sound like a great starting place for the conversation, and I'd be interested in their input.
Thank you.
Ms. Weber, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So at our last meeting, there were lots of comments related to funding for the school district, right? And of course, the group that works for the Community Advisory Committee, they aren't representatives of the school or the school system, or even the city for that matter. I think they are representative of nonprofits in our community and concerned citizens that want to help those groups. I think, from my perspective, perhaps, we should give them more than just a blanket, whatever you think. So for example, I think we had asked for city staff for additional information related to the school district, and whether there were other school districts that are having similar financial issues. We haven't received any of that, but I know that there is more funding coming in the future where if the school district, for example, is something that after we get any more feedback, we want to target that, I think we will have funds available that we could use to go toward that effort. So personally, although I agree with you, it is very important to get that information from the Community Advisory Committee of what they think. I think if we could narrow the scope, I for one would say, why don't we suggest that they use their traditional process, funding the traditional agencies that they normally would with CDBG funds? Because we know that there's a need within the nonprofit organizations within our community, and not do anything out of their ordinary process. I would be, I would think that that would be a reasonable way to go with this, but I'm certainly open to if they have other thought processes, because maybe they will say, hey, the school district is a more important thing right now. I don't know.
The only thing that I'd add to what you said, I'd agree with everything you've said, but as far as community perspective, community representation, the Citizens Advisory Committee is supposed to specifically represent low and moderate income neighborhoods and needs. So in terms of the school, I would anticipate that the CAC might bring a specific focus to students from low and moderate income and their specific needs.
Sure.
So I think it's always important to seek their input, but otherwise, I'd agree with everything you said there.
Sure, so as long as they get this message that it's an open slate, but I don't think we are necessarily putting any sort of an emphasis on any one of those things that Mr. Richards suggested, then great.
Very good, yes.
Ms. Cavami?
Has there been a staff request for mental health matters as far as how much they would like to see?
No, we've had some very preliminary discussions on the eligibility and issues of that nature, but nothing specific in terms of a dollar amount.
And it is eligible?
Well, we're looking at how that would work. It's basically a startup organization, so we're looking carefully.
Do you think that there's the reasonable expectation that an amount could be presented?
Well, between CDBG funding and the community service grant program, which lacks the federal requirements, they would be eligible certainly under that at the minimum. In terms of CDBG funding, either regular or this CARES Act funding, we're looking at that. I can't say with certainty yet.
So would the CAC be looking at that and then making that recommendation to come back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Another point of clarification. So normally, these funds come with a lot of strings, federal strings attached. Those strings have been loosened, but there's still the requirement that these funds be directed towards low and moderate income needs in neighborhoods, or just COVID-related issues?
Well, there is the COVID requirement that's kind of overarching. We do have the ability, since there is an actual presidential disaster declaration, to use that urgent need, national objective, which usually is kind of off limits, so that removes that low to moderate requirement for 30% of the funding. So that's some added flexibility that we don't normally have.
Very good. These are complicated documents, so thanks for that, boiling that down for us.
Sure.
Yeah, so are you seeking council's or committee of the whole's recommendation for CAC? Is that what we're seeking right now?
Right, if you have any sort of direction, preference, prioritization for these funds, I will take that information to the advisory committee. Otherwise, they will have the public information, the same as everyone else from last week's meeting, and we'll go to them and start our allocation process next week.
So not knowing requirements or desired amounts, I would just say that I would support funding towards mental health matters, but to the extent that the staff deem appropriate, CAC deems appropriate, and then I guess it would come back to us.
Very well put, Mr. Cavami. Thank you.
So moved.
That's a motion by Cavami. Second by Ms. Mock, and the comment, Ms. Mock?
Are you looking for other areas that we might be concerned about, that you're looking for? Direction, essentially?
Yes, just kind of general direction outside of our normal allocation process.
I guess one of the things I'm concerned about is when eviction moratoriums come off and where that leaves people who may have been, you know, harmed financially or not able to work, and, you know, if they've racked up late fees. That's one of those things that I'm, I guess I'm personally concerned when those moratoriums come off, that we may see a bunch of people in bad situations.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Weber?
What were the priorities from the 2019 process? Did they have designated priorities at that time, or did they just take applications?
For the coronavirus funding, or just in general?
The CDBG, because that's what they're going to be building on. These new monies have some more flexibility, but I'm guessing they would be basing it on their previous priorities?
Well, we did just update our five-year consolidated plan, so we have our priority funding areas, which were the same as before, affordable housing, public facilities, nothing really radically different.
Right.
Just an emphasis on the operating funds as being a key component of needs for our local nonprofit.
And you said one of the key words I was expecting, or hoping for, housing, affordable housing, and so that could be directed towards Ms. Mock's question, her concern. Good.
Council President Sandy. Oh, yeah, Ms. Phelan.
Thank you. To Councilmember Cavami's question, so what we've tried to do as staff is that, because we're in these positions, we hear feedback from groups that are needing funding or some prioritization. That's how the mental health matters. It came to our attention that, you know, this conglomerate group with the schools and Altru, and I think UND and ourselves, is that there were some gaps. I'm concerned not only in the midst of COVID, but, you know, maybe as we work through COVID with mental health issues, and how are we going to get in front of this instead of reacting to it? So those are ideas that we were just bringing to you, just because we've heard it along the way, and then when these are pandemic-related funds, those are just bullets we're hitting that we've heard, and so I think what Meredith is asking, if you've heard other things in the community, other than the routine, because this shouldn't be routine, this should be, to me, strategic-specific, that'll help us through the pandemic and hopefully carry us through the pandemic in whatever way we can. So that's why it's really, whatever you're hearing in the community, so we're going to provide what we're hearing in the community from organizations, and encouraging them showing up, hopefully to, not only us providing the words, but if they have words.
Right.
Provide them themselves, too. So we'll do as much as we can on our own merits of what we've heard in the community.
So affordable housing was a priority from the last process. We'd want affordable housing with an emphasis on eviction process.
Right.
Yeah, Ms. Cavami?
Since we're talking about this, so we've already decided that we'd like to assist the school district, so along those same lines, has any of the childcare providers reached out with assistance requests for sanitation, or supplies, or equipment, or has there been any of that?
I have not heard that personally, and we haven't really had a formal request process yet. That's kind of what we're on the verge of starting. Council, of course, has the opportunity to overrule that process, and so if you directed me to direct these funds to a specific entity or target area, then we would bypass that more routine process. But in the absence of that, then yes, we will bring the items that I've listed in the staff report and others to the Community Advisory Committee for their recommendations.
Ms. Weber? And Mr. Cavami, thanks for bringing up childcare. It's such a critically important issue. Normally, that would only be, CDBG funds could only be used for childcare issues directed at lower moderate income populations. Now, 30% of that could be used in any way that's directly attributable to COVID, and I would agree that that's a priority that could be added to the list for our, from our.
Can we amend that motion, excuse me, to include just attention paid towards childcare providers?
As well?
As well, just for, if CAC is going to consider all of these options, I'd like that to be on the table?
Well, just for a point of clarification, are you just collecting items? It doesn't necessarily need to be part of the motion. The motion is, let's move it forward to Community Advisory Committee, and you already know what the priorities are.
This is just an informational item to let you know the funding parameters and to provide me feedback. No action is needed tonight.
Great. I think we're all in agreement on moving it forward.
Thank you.
Okay. She doesn't, this is for informational items, so we can vote on it, Kyle, if you want to, but I think.
Motion in seconds, so I just.
So, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.2, City of Grand Forks Reorganization Inspection Department.
The mayor? Yes, thank you, Council President Sandy and members of the council. As you can see, we're proposing some changes with inspections after review and input from various departments, as well as engaging the business community and the Chamber of Commerce. I've decided to create more efficiency by creating a business inspections department with a director that is in a contracted, non-classified position. This would remove inspections from underneath engineering and align a clear chain of command. We've also engaged planning, engineering, and community development on new procedures to smooth out our relationships and allow the city to serve developers and businesses with a single point of contact from start to finish. Do you want me to talk? I could probably talk on the PIC real quick, too. We've also made a move under administration that was kind of finalized, we'd started the process earlier, but the Public Information Center, I think, has become antiquated. There's automated telephone answering services and online services that are provided now. So we've decided to eliminate the PIC department completely and reorganize the three communications specialists into more defined and clear roles. On top of my personal involvement and added responsibilities, these positions have also helped take over a portion of the eliminated community and government relations officer and the welcoming community coordinator positions responsibilities. This reorg does not begin until the eliminated positions have been, those buyouts have been fully paid off, which is December 26th. It has been my goal to be more efficient and cost-effective with my administration, and I pride myself in having added zero positions and only subtracting from administrative overhead. The total on the administrative cost savings for 2021 is going to be 183,214, which would equate to nearly $750,000 over a four-year term, and I still feel that we can give a high-level service from administration. So go ahead, Todd, smooth over the rest.
Ms. Phelan?
City Council President Sandy and community of the whole. I would mention a few other things, you know, some of the moves we're making physically, you know, planning and community development is planning to move down to the first floor where the city administrator and mayor's office was, so that'll happen. That'll free up additional room on the second floors, so both engineering and inspections will remain there, but under reconfiguration with more space as we move forward. So they will be on the first and second floors as we move forward. I think the other part is, Mayor Bocinski is really prioritizing, this should be a contracted position, is, one thing I know about the mayor is, let's try some things, and if it doesn't work quite perfectly, we can always modify. So that's part of this, why it would be a contracted benefited position instead of a civil service position, is that, let's try this, let's give it a shot, and in the most good-faith way. I think the other thing is, it would be an internal, external, mean that we would take all pools of candidates, not only just internal candidates, but external candidates moving forward, so we have a wider pool moving forward in the industry. The other part is, we really want the planning and community development to be the front door and to really be really terrific at moving commercial projects along, and if we've had struggles here at City Hall and the City of Grand Forks, it's been in this area, and the other part is that there are only, a lot of times in these positions, I know there's really no good deed will go unpunished, or people only point out the one out of 10, or one out of 100, but, you know, that's the business they're in when you're in a permitting capacity, but we really need to up our game, and so these are all meant to do that. As part of the planning and community development, specifically planning, we really want them to be, to lead that site plan review process, we want them to have pre-application meetings, and we want them to really lead the process with whomever is coming to town on a project. So we've made some efforts, we're going to have a more of a focused effort on having our best people be project managers, getting the right people in the room as projects move along, and make sure we continue to remain in contact. So with that, you know, the departments that are really important are engineering, inspections, and planning and community development, with planning and community development really our leads as large commercial projects come through, and mid and smaller size. So whether you're from a national firm or a local firm, we can make this as smooth as possible and continue to grow our community, which has been a big deal to all of us. Customer service is a huge, huge item, and we really need to be welcoming, we need to be engaging, we need to be helpful, and when we can't say yes to a certain regulatory thing, we need to find a way of options that are for. So that requires people to be well-informed, well-educated, well-engaged, and really care about what they're doing. So we're really going to take an emphasis on doing that, and that takes leadership. It takes leadership so people understand what their roles and responsibilities are and what the expectations are here with the City of Grand Forks, and this is a way to renew the organization a little bit. I just wanted to point out, we did add some stuff, like, because I think it was really important, we had some questions from City Council President Sandy and others, just about kind of what we, what kind of things that we moved through the budget process, so we did add a kind of a one-pager just to go through, Mayor Bocinski went through, many of those, and trying to reconfigure so that we don't have a public information center, but it's really aligned with the administration, and with three, four distinct roles that they're going to play as moving forward, trying to build off what the strengths of the individuals are, building up the strengths that we need in our organization, and when positions need to change, or through attrition, we can always modify the organization. So that's what we're trying to create within the city administration, do less with more, which I think Mayor Bocinski has demonstrated. On the bottom of that one-pager, I did highlight some of the things that Tangi briefed, some of those are ads where we had some promotional things, so, you know, there was a public works promotion, there were some water, wastewater manager positions, creating two deputy fire chiefs, we had some public health modifications, human resources had some organizational modifications, and then finally, the city administration, which was the part where we had significant savings, because we didn't fill some certain positions, and we certainly have tried to narrow down the administrative burden on the organization, the administrative overhead in the organization, and try to get the right people in the right place, and try to make that move that forward. So Tangi's done a lot of the work behind the scenes, so thank you, Tangi, and we have changed some of the titles, so you may have noticed that we're trying to perfect the titles, and we're trying to be engaging to the people that are working in the departments, what job title works best, get their feedback, we're trying to look out in the marketplace, what kind of position can we really survey out there? So we have made some modifications, whether something was called a coordinator, or now is it called a program manager? We're just trying to specifically define what the position is, it's not going to mean that you're going to get paid more because you're now a program manager versus a coordinator, we're just trying to refine what those titles are. So we have worked, trying to perfect that, we have engaged the specific departments and the people, just so they have some feedback along the way. So that's been the kind of the process since we've kind of concluded the budget, we want to start moving forward into '21, and so whether it's with inspections, which is an additional ask, and all the things that we've worked through the budget with you on that. So with that, I defer to Tangi, and I know she's answered a lot of questions along the way, too.
Any questions? Comments? Whoever?
Sure. So can you, let me try to put this as simply as possible. Can you describe what the city inspections department and process currently is, and what it will be under these proposed changes?
The inspections specifically, I think Todd can probably better answer
Okay.
that specific question.
Currently, right now, we have three main departments that are involved in the development of the City of Grand Forks. Those are, currently, right now, are engineering, it's planning, and within engineering, inspections is a division of engineering. So what we're proposing here, right now, engineering is made up of civil engineering, it's made up of inspections, it's made up of electrical, our electrical division, signals, traffic engineering, those sorts of things. What we're proposing is engineering would have a focus on the civil engineering portion that they're currently doing, they would retain the electrical division with traffic engineering and signals and all the things our electrical folks do. We would separate out inspections. It's really become, it's unique, and it's probably a historical thing to our City of Grand Forks. Inspections linked with engineering is not commonly seen, but sometimes, you know, you get unique individuals, like Ken Vean back in the day when he was the city engineer, public works director, where you have a large span of control, but all these years later, I think we need to separate that, we need to have a focus. So that's what that's going to do, it's going to separate out from engineering, so we're going to have, planning is going to be distinct in the development process, community development is going to be distinct, inspections is going to be distinct, and engineering is going to be distinct, and those four entities are going to have to work seamlessly in an integrated manner through the city administration to really work together. We're going to put a lot of pressure on planning to be the project coordinators and managers, whatever we want to call them, to make sure they can manage that process among those four groups, and we're going to assign project managers within that so they can manage projects. So you get the right people in the room, but we're going to put, the goal is to put inspections on their own moving forward, it's become large enough, it's become distinct enough, and segregated enough from the other, let's put an emphasis on it, and let's really develop it more wholly.
So someone from planning might be assigned, or whatever the word would be, to a project and help shepherd it through all of these stages and departments, so that a developer is working with one individual as they move through the process? That sounds fantastic. Also, inspections being in engineering, sort of engineering, sort of independent, that's the, this is a change that's been a long time coming. So Ms. Collins, what is her current title and what will her new title be?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber. Right now, Bev is the building inspection, I'll call it, division director, and she's an equivalent to. an equivalent to an assistant director within engineering. So what we're planning, this is going to be a department head position, equivalent to the city engineer. So this is a promotional opportunity, or it could be an opportunity for somebody outside the organization to receive this job, okay? As part of this transition of this particular job, and Mr. Goss has got better words for what this, I'm going to ask him what the technical, no one's going to lose their position. Say, for instance, somebody internal really wants this position, they don't receive the department. There may be a time when we have an additional position, and we may need to attrition positions, and we do that all the time every year, where we fill a position as part of a succession planning, as part of a kind of a leadership change, but over time, then we decide not to fill positions. I think there's going to have to be a transition period to get this up, whether it's somebody internal or external. So that's what we do under this case. And I would ask Mr. Goss, just because it's going to matter, I'm calling it a contracted benefited position, and I'd ask Mr. Goss to maybe call it exactly what we should call it.
The way I would view it would be a department head that would be a non-classified contracted position. It would not be subject to the civil service process under Chapter Six of the city code.
Hasn't there been a move in recent years to try to steer away from contracted positions?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber. Under the previous administration, the previous mayor, yes. You know, I've been here maybe, hopefully not too long, but when I started here, I became contracted, and there was a wave with Mayor Brown, early years, Mayor Brown, and city council in the early 2000s.
Right, Mayor Brown and city council.
And city council to move them to contracted positions. Probably, I'm going to say, I don't know, 10 years ago, we started migrating positions back to a civil service, but we kind of matured as an organization, people felt comfortable. A lot of the positions that got moved up were promotional positions, I'm not going to say all of them, but a majority were within the organization. So maybe it was, it was probably easier knowing that we had a candidate coming forward that was already a civil service employee, that was an assistant, that was really a natural fit. And I think a lot of those were really natural, really great succession planning, and you can see this on every Monday night, how really great department heads we have that have been, you know, refined and moved forward in the organization. I think in this case, I think we want to take a broad view in this organization to take a look broad, more broadly. It's something that's new that we're working on, and I think that really lends to more of a non-classified, it's not a routine thing, it's not like assessing. Say, for instance, we had an assessing, and people have really been schooled up in assessing, maybe there's a senior assessor, there's an assistant assessor. There'd be a kind of a logical moving, as long as everything is going well, that there'd be an internal candidate that would move from one civil service position and get promoted up. I think in this case, this is a different, much different thing that we're trying to do. We're really trying to realign, reorganize, reboot ourselves with this move.
And this is new, and it's new for me. The first that we saw of this was late on Thursday, and then it's shifted a little bit again this afternoon, and this is some big changes with some big promise. You mentioned that in some ways this could be described as a promotion opportunity, but I'm also hearing from you, and I want to clarify this, this isn't both a promotion opportunity and a goodbye opportunity. We're not cutting any jobs. Well, specific to Ms. Collins, she has the opportunity to move into a contract department head position, and that would be a national search, I'm guessing, that we would engage to fill a position like that?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, yes. It would be a local search and a regional, and perhaps reaching a national. So it would go from public sector to private sector. Anyone internal would be allowed to participate and compete as well with anyone out to the outside of the organization.
And if Ms. Collins?
And I think clearly, we're not going to, we're not going to say, well, so and so didn't get the job, they don't have a position here, we're not doing that. We are, potentially, we could add a position in the City of Grand Forks, and we've done this before as part of succession planning. We would look at future opportunities where we could realign and look at attrition opportunities.
I've heard complaints from people across the city about Ms. Collins and her work in the department. I've also heard tremendous compliments about the fine work that they do there. And this, if she chooses to apply for this position or doesn't, whether she chooses to apply and doesn't get it, or she chooses to not apply, I mean, we would hope that she would apply and get it, that would be fantastic. If she chooses to apply and doesn't get it, or chooses not to apply, what happens to her job at that point?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, she would remain in her existing position. And for example, there's lots of retirements, we anticipate retirements in the next, you know, three years, we're going to have a kind of a ramp, it's going to be a little scary if you're leading an organization. But when retirements occur, people leave the organization, we evaluate positions, you know, should we fill that position at all, should we modify that position? We would do that on an ongoing basis in inspections and throughout the organization part. But she applied, didn't receive the job, she'd remain in her current position. If she applied, received the position, it would be a non-classified contracted position, similar to the position I have as a contracted employee for the City of Grand Forks.
And if she applied and didn't get, receive it, she could stay in the position she's currently with?
Yes.
Very good. You mentioned some upcoming retirements. I remember when I first met Mr. Duquette, he cautioned me, oh, there's a number of retirements coming up, and it sounded like we were going to lose a lot of institutional knowledge. We did, but we also gained a wealth of new energy, including your role as city administrator. So thanks for taking all of my questions.
Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Veen.
I'd like to make a couple comments about the recommended change that's coming up. I talked earlier to Mayor Bocinski about this, and I really personally think it makes good sense to move forward with this proposed change. I think there's a lot of similarities between engineering and inspections, but there's also a lot of differences between the two. And so I think raising the level of importance through, by being a department head-led department probably makes sense for us, and it could have been done long ago, but I think now is a very good time for us to think about doing that. The issue that I have is that I do believe that it should be a civil service position. Actually, I think all the department heads should be civil service. I think it is to the benefit of the community when that happens. So although I agree with the recommendation, I think, to branch out and make this its own department, I without question think we're better off having it as a civil service position versus a contract position.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Other comments? Ms. Mock?
Can you walk me through the process? If I come in and I have a new proposal currently, what is the process? Who do I work with? Is it engineering? Is it planning? When does inspections come into the process?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Mock. Right now, I would say, in more of an informal way, we want them to start with planning, and it starts there, and then they assemble the team, whether it's in inspections or engineering, you know, health, public works, they kind of, we're just going to be more of a formal and focused way that we're going to do this, moving forward and get them in the right location. So we are doing-
Ms. Phelan? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Does that typically start with Mr. Brooks, with Ryan Brooks?
It can, it can start with Mr. Brooks, Ms. Edwardson.
Mr. Conlin?
Ms. Hallford, Mr. Conlin. I would say Mr. Conlin, he's over in community development, it could, but I would say those three people are. Mr. Brooks, Ms. Edwardson, and Ms. Hallford are, and Ms. Hallford and Ms. Edwardson are senior planners. Ryan is the assistant city planner, also helps with community development, is kind of the, and obviously Brad is our city planner. But that's that core group to include Brad, and then we have Meredith and Andy and some other new folks that we've hired along, and we want them in the same place so they can really have some, we're doing similar things, but we need to be better, and we need to formalize some things, and we need to have them really focusing on this. And part of this team, we need to really formalize what they're doing. The mayor really feels like this is this one-stop shop, and we've made, Mayor Brown under his administration made some incremental steps, and this is making several more incremental steps to that, into that direction.
Well, my, the reason I'm asking the question is I'm trying to understand how this changes the current situation.
Well, I think the only thing we're asking for is this, we're trying to describe where we're going to emphasize the process, so you know, this request is to make the inspections department its own department with its own department head.
Yes.
We're asking it to be non-classified contracted position, and we're telling you we're going to do an internal, external search as part of the process. That's what this whole request is, and it's really to focus our energies on inspections and get them to a higher level. But I just wanted to discuss the process. It doesn't leave out the fact that planning is going to be really important as part of that four-member departmental team to really do above and beyond what they're already doing.
Mr. Mayor, some data?
Yeah, I think that what you're probably looking for is, in planning currently, if something comes in, it's maybe, the same person's not taking it all the way through, and sometimes things can get lost, or the contact, you don't know who you're contacting. Now, developer or business person comes in, it's the same person they're dealing with the entire time, they're responsible for that project. So if they drop the ball, we know exactly who was the project manager. Before, it would get bounced around the department, so it wasn't as efficient. So we're setting the, kind of the clear guidelines, and this was also their recommendation as well. So it's just formalizing, I think, a procedure that probably should have already been happening.
And I'm okay with formalizing the procedure, I'm trying to understand why that necessitates creating another department, is I guess where I'm trying to understand.
Those are separate, two separate ways to help be more friendly and more efficient.
Okay. So then, we think we need another department and department head because that will help in that, or what, what's the actual reasoning for a separate department?
Exactly. We're setting up a clear chain of command and better leadership structure so that the whole department can be run more efficiently and more effectively.
Okay. One thing I do, I think we have really great city staff. I want to be careful of sending a message that city staff are somehow working for the developers. I think all of our city staff work for the city, and that means developers, but that also means the best interest of the city. So I want to make sure that it's not implied maybe that they're responsible for that development or they're championing particular developments. They would still be representing the city and the city code and our city guidance and documents for how we want things developed, correct?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Mock, of course, there's a regulatory portion of this, you have to follow the rules, and that's where you get some, you know, some developers or business, they struggle with that, right? But part of it is really customer service, and there's a way to make people feel when they come to your community, there's a way to make them, if you have to say no, how you get there. And we all know the difference, and we all know that we have a regulatory responsibility, we're going to talk about Red River Biore refinery. So we all get, we got to do regulatory things at the same time. Industry and business has to grow and become dynamic, and what we've heard and from other communities, sometimes we've performed really well, sometimes we hear comparisons to other communities where we could do better. And so we're trying, this is a, let's do not good, let's get to great, and let's get to it sooner rather than later, because as we enter from this pandemic, we've been very fortunate, we've been growing, lots of business coming to town, but we got to keep that engine going, and inspections is a huge piece. And even speaking with our city engineer, Al Grasser, he has, it's just kind of outgrown engineering, it's time for it to be on its own. Let's have a focus and an emphasis on that particular department so that it can really have some special attention with a department head that's empowered and engaged and can take it to the next level.
Thank you, Ms. Phelan. I think, I think something that you said at the beginning of this resonates with me is, is you were talking about trying to find ways to yes, and you mentioned that. And I had actually written that down in my notes earlier today, and I think that that goes to the point that you just made is, understanding the difference between providing a no or providing a no but, and this is how we actually get you from here to here. And I think when you start talking about what you're hearing within the community, and Mr. Weber said it, I've heard lots of very good things about Ms. Collins. I've also heard on more than one occasion that our inspections department makes it hard for developers or development or whatever to actually get from point A to point B when they want to grow, expand, or just come to our city. And of course, they have a very important role to provide in making sure that we are doing the regulatory steps that we must do, and absolutely nobody thinks that we should ever take a shortcut on that. I do think that all of the changes that you and the mayor are proposing related to following that path through, I think that although, Ms. Mock, I totally value and understand her point of view that Ms. Edwardson should not be advocating for a specific project, although I really do like the idea of them becoming invested, trying to find the way where we can help them get from where, you know, when they walk in the door to, we're doing a ribbon cut and shoveling some dirt, right? So I think that, you know, the concept of being business friendly is so important, I think the mayor's been talking about that. I think a lot of us have been speaking of that for a long time. And so I think that the concept, although I'm not 100% sold on all of these changes, not because we haven't seen them in action, right? And so we thought, we spent a lot of time talking about, well, how do we continue to evolve and move ourselves forward? And Mr. Phelan, you talk about this a lot, that, well, we're going to try something, we're going to stick our neck out and see what happens, and hopefully things work, and if they don't, then we can readjust. I am a little bit, Mr. Veen, I value Mr. Veen's opinion considerably. I know we've had some discussion about the differences between civil service versus contract. You and I have had multiple conversations about this, Ms. Phelan. I won't remind you right now how, what you've told me about it. I will say that I am a little bit, my thought process goes to how we go out and do our salary surveys and evaluate. When we're, and this is probably from Ms. Bovette, when we do our salary surveys, are we, although I know we call other cities and we email and we do our due diligence, but do we compare whether engineering, director of engineering is a civil service versus a contract employee, when we're identifying how much our employee should be getting paid?
No, typically, we don't take a look at whether an employee or a position is contract or civil service. We do have that information in other formats. Specifically, when we looked at classifying the department heads, we took a look at what other entities do, but not for the salary survey purposes. We don't compare that or utilize that as a tool.
Got it. I would make the recommendation that the next time we do the salary survey to compare our department heads, we should get two pools, one civil service and one contract, just to see if there's a significant difference between the two.
Yep, and we absolutely can add that.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other thoughts, Mr. Weber?
Yeah. So one part of this that I really like is, you're kind of designing a one-stop shop. They come in, they, whether we call them a liaison or director or coach, whatever, to help them get through the whole process. I really like that approach to this. Let's discuss this issue of contract positions. Why the move to the contract position? With a contract position, the city, the mayor, the city administrator have the advantage of kind of being able to fire at will, but that runs the risk of becoming more politicized. And so the civil service has the protection against politics, but then it creates some red tape. Can you discuss why the intent to move this to a contract position? Does it go beyond what I just said, or?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, I'll give you my thoughts, and I've been, as I describe them in both sides of this matter. I've only been contracted- I've, I've only been contracted with, when I was public works director or as city administrator. So that's all I've really known here. There's some pros and cons on both. I think if you have a really terrific city council like we do, and you have a really good terrific mayor, it really doesn't matter what kind of system you're under. And I know what people are concerned is if, if there is tumultuousness in the community, whether it's with the council or the mayor, civil service does provide you some protection as, as you move forward. I think the reason why I, as Counsel President Sandy said, we've had some conversations, why I would fall on the side, me personally here, and I'm part of the administration, as a contracted, non-classified position, is this is something new. We're going to try and see how this works. And it's meant to pilot something. It's meant to, let's give this a really great faith shot at this and see how it works. That seems to fit better under a non-classified contracted position. A civil service position would be, you know, the candidate you would have, you would, you would stay in there for some time. So the candidate, if you applied for it, you would know that it's a non-classified contracted position. I'm starting something new. It's a real opportunity for me. But you would know that, hey, it, it's not meant, this isn't a historic position that we've always had and likely always will. This is more of a trying kind of thing. And everyone would know that you applied as, you can, we've hired department heads that are, are classified positions. I'll give you Gary Lorenz is one of them. So we, we went out internally and externally, hired Gary because he was the deputy fire chief in Fargo. We created a classified position because we thought, we're always going to have a fire chief in Grand Forks, and let's make it a civil service position as we move forward. Obviously, that's worked quite well. Gary knew that he was applying for a civil service position as part of that. We were able to hire him from the outside, and, and he accepted as a civil service. But everyone would know. That's why it's so critically important how we advertise this. All the candidates will know whether you're internal or external, that it's a non-classified position.
How many of our current department heads are, are contractors? Yourself, Mr. Grasser?
Mr. Grasser, Mr. Gangler?
Mr. Gangler.
And Ms. Halt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think it has a little, little to do with my philosophy too. I mean, I'm coming from the private sector. I'm coming from where you're, you need to perform. And, you know, not that you want to assume that anyone's ever going to have to be fired, but I think you need that option in order to get the most efficiency out of your department head. And I think back to Mr. Sandy's point, I think within a city, you either need to have high wages, or if you have the civil service protection, your wages should probably be a little bit lower because you have more protection. I think we've gotten into a place where we're having both. So I think it's time to differentiate that. But I think I'm, it's, I'm probably imposing a little bit more of my bias there because I'm used to the private sector where you have to perform. And I think at a high level such as a department head, you need to be expected to perform. So if it was my choice alone, I would have all department heads as contracted employees and expect a lot out of them because it's a, it's an important job, you're paid well, and we need to have the best people in those positions. Not that you aren't already as civil service, but that's, that's from my private sector bias, I suppose.
It is a philosophical difference in some ways. A civil service position does not mean a job for life, or that you can't be terminated for cause. But there, there is a greater degree of security. And that's been an important part of our hiring, which has been difficult, especially in the engineering sphere. We've had a hard time hiring these individuals because there is more money to be made, in many cases, in the private sector. So we, as a city, often end up spending more than is necessary because we have to go to the private sector to do our work. And I, I would anticipate it's quite likely that engineers might be among those applying for this position. Yeah. All right. So as you point out, a kind of a, a difference in philosophy on this. What we'd be doing tonight is making a recommendation for council to consider again next week. This isn't a final decision on this. But with that, I'd be willing to make a motion to move this forward to, to council next week.
Some motion by Weber.
Ken, did you have another comment? Did you want a second?
I, I do not want a second.
Okay.
I will second.
Second by Weigl, thank you. Ken, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I, like I said earlier, I certainly see the merit of making this move, but I, without a doubt, I think that, that these types of positions need to be civil service. You know, we have a good mayor, we have a good city council today. That doesn't mean it can't change. It, it has, and it probably will. And it can be exceptionally difficult under some situations. Politics will and does come into play. I, I think when I go to a department head, I want them to give me the best advice they have because of the personal experiences that they have and the professional person that they are, not have to give me advice in fear of losing their job or being fired. And I know in the past, city council members have done that. And I've been in that position personally. And I, I guess I just think that for cause, just because you're civil service doesn't mean you have a job for life. I think for cause, and if it's well done and documented, they can be terminated. I think they, whether you're civil servant or contracted, the expectation is you should do the job and be held accountable for the outcomes that you have. So I, I think, I don't agree with, with, in this case, the mayor on the presentation of this position. I think it's needed. But I, I just think if we want to get the right thoughts and advice, I think department heads of all positions who are, who are trying to address the politics at a different level need to have the security of being civil service. So I, and, and again, like I said, I can just say that from the personal experience that it makes a difference. And it's been very interesting, the things that have been tried to maneuver, to persuade department heads to make decisions they may not think is in the best interest of the city.
Ms. Mock? Thank you, Mr. Veen.
Um, I guess I really appreciate Mr. Veen's experience because he has had it personally as well as just experience on the council. I do, I guess, have some questions as well on the organizational chart, which I don't know if that is considered part of the motion. I just organizationally have some questions on that. I can certainly get behind trying something new. So if we think the inspections department as a separate department would help things, I can get behind that. I can certainly get behind city employees taking on more of a one-contact for projects. I think all of that sounds like good changes to try. I just have, I, I have concerns with it being a contracted position, particularly if you're going to have some technicalities involved. Something like engineering or inspections where you're meeting certain criteria, and it might be that department head's job to say they don't meet it. I have concerns with them being in a contracted position. I think Mr. Veen put that quite well. With the organizational chart, I just, I'm not exactly sure. There were a few positions that are both city and county managed that were kind of right along with our city-only department heads. And so I don't know if there's a time to talk about that. I don't know if that's part of this, if you're asking us to approve that as well.
Counsel President Sandy and Vice President Mock. We were just providing the, the current org chart that we have in the new one, just so you understand the context of where inspection fits in and, and what our departments, and so along the bottom are all noted. We, we may have missed PSAP, which is a city-county department, but it's, we, so we upset, we missed, actually not because we didn't.
No, she's on there.
Oh, she's on there, no, good. We missed her earlier, so it tells you we got a lot of departments to keep track of. Thankfully, you should all be thinking, you know, you already know this, we have great department heads that are doing terrific work. That's why you only, you don't hear much other than when people show up on a Monday evening because there's a lot of great things that go on. So really, we were just telling, showing you what the current org chart. We also added in inspections. And then we also just want to make it clear that we have eliminated that public information center and just made it part of the city administration. Want to let you know that. And it's going to take some transitioning for all of us, not to call it public, it's just going to be part of the city administration with four distinct positions.
So does that mean 311 is going away?
No, it's all going to be, it's, it's, all those are going to be in place. They're going to do similar things, but it's just going to be part of this. The city administration is going to take over the public information role on behalf of the city of Grand Forks is another way to say it. And so as before, we'd have discussions about, you know, public information. Now, the city administration hat, those are the, the crew that we're going to try to centrally administer things across the board and at this point in time, so.
Any other comments?
So Mr. Veen said, no, he did not want to second my motion. And, and Ms. Mock is, is following, I'm guessing, a similar line of questioning. Is it the issue of this going to a contract position? Is that the only sticking point for, for Mr. Veen and Ms. Mock? Or are there other concerns? Because my motion is that we move this forward for discussion, further discussion next week. And at that time, this, this could be discussed further, right? That we could accept all of this and decide that we want this to be civil service rather than contract. Is that your concern, Ms. Mock and, and Mr. Veen? Or is it more complicated?
I, I can answer that, Mr. Weber. For me, it is that simple. I think the idea that's going forward is, is worth a try. I certainly support the difference, or trying something new here. But I'm going to have this type of a comment on most department head positions. And basically, it's based on personal experience. So as the motion stands, I won't vote for it, but we know it's going to go on to city council. And we'll have another chance to talk at, at city council meeting.
Any other comments? Mr. Kavami?
Yeah, I, I understand that we're voting to just move it forward to council, and I'm, I can agree to that. But I do think I have questions for Mayor Bochensky and Tanji to just better understand this between now and next week. We would have the full opportunity to discuss that, correct?
In, in fact, could we have someone from civil service speak at, at next week's meeting? Is that possible?
Councilman Weber, yes, I can certainly reach out to the civil service commissioner and see if they can come and speak on, on the commission's behalf.
I guess I would recommend, Mr. Kavami, if you have specific questions for Ms. Bovet or the mayor, you're welcome to email them. And I'm sure that they would collect that info and get it back to the rest of us as well, so.
Yeah, certainly, go ahead. And I would imagine a civil service person coming in talking about it would probably recommend civil service, but.
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah. So I, I think that my questions will be sent electronically.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, stick a five by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Dockler, Mock, Veen dissent. Mr. Weigl, were you there and vote?
I did, I, I voted yes.
So four, four-three has it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure when the last time I witnessed a four-three vote. I don't even think in my 10 years. I witnessed a three-three vote once. Item 2.3, change order number one, project 8236, Greenway Bike Path Asphalt Repair North Pedestrian Bridge, 7th Avenue North. Mr. Lieberman, thank you for answering my question today.
Oh, good evening. Thank you, President Sandy, committee members. As a matter of refresher, this contract met the city council back on August 3rd when we awarded the low bid amount to Strata Corporation to provide an overlay, an asphalt overlay on our Greenway Bike Path, about a 1.8 mile stretch of it. That construction took place roughly three to four weeks ago. It was about two days to put down that asphalt. And we have a great product for our citizens out there. If you haven't been out there, I encourage you to go for a bike ride out there and maybe utilize that. But in, in the performance of the construction, we gather weight tickets for the amount of asphalt that's used. And that's a little bit of an estimate. Placing asphalt can be variable. We always aim to have accurate engineering estimates so that our prices are paid out accordingly and, and there's no surprises at the end. And every once in a while, we, we have a, have an oops. And that's, that's kind of what we observed here with this. We, in the course of the two days of placing asphalt, we tallied up the tickets at the end, and we said, there's about a, about a 30% difference. So we looked at our calculations, and there was simply a staff error in the initial engineer's estimate. Now, our inspection validated that the city received the one and a half inch lift of asphalt that was planned for. There was no error in the actual construction. There's quality assurance and quality control measures in place to ensure we get what we pay for. This was just simply an error in the estimate in computing the tonnage of asphalt that would result in a one and a half inch lift. So tonight, we are requesting a change order in the amount of $29,219 to pay for the additional asphalt that was utilized, that the city did benefit from. And that would be paid for from the Flood Protection Capital Maintenance Fund, Fund 4154. This contract was originally funded from that fund, where $150,000 was budgeted in 2020. And the original contract amount was $124,000. So we have enough budget authority to cover nearly all of this change order amount. The final contract amount would be roughly $154,000. It'll be a $150,000 budget, so within 3%. So with that, staff requests and recommends approval of this change order.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Any comments?
Move approval.
Moved by Veen, sir, second by Dockler. Quick question, can't, under $30,000, can't we just administratively approve that?
This is, this exceeds the percent authorization that the city engineer has.
Very good, okay.
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, stick a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.4, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, MPO 2021-22 Unified Planning Work Program Solicitation. Mr. Kranko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. At a recent Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee meeting, we were informed that there are some potential additional dollars that may become available through the federal transportation, or sorry, federal transit administration for the MPO's work activities. Now, the MPO, they end up having a two-year work plan, and in this case, they're looking at their 2021-2022 work program. Overall, since there's some additional funding available, they are requesting if we have any additional work activities. And potential work activities must be vetted through the local authority, which is the city council. Overall, staff is recommending three work activities in a priority order for this available funding. First is our traffic counting program. This involves our video cameras that are mounted on top of our traffic signals. What this program does, it is, it allows new traffic signals, like the new signal at Gateway and 55th, or demers in the West Columbia Ramp, to be calibrated and brought into our system. And this allows us to have a continuous counting program. It gives us a better idea as to traffic patterns that are occurring throughout each of these intersections throughout the city. The nice thing is, is it's throughout the entire year. We can see it over multiple years versus just an, an individual spot check if we were to send somebody out there to do an intersection count. The, the second program is an aerial image, an updated aerial image. MPO typically does this about once every three years. And in the past, they've gotten a six-inch pixel resolution. In off-years from this, the, the city has also gotten aerial images, considering the changing nature of the city and as we continue to grow and change. These aerial images are very important, particularly when it comes to design and allowing us to see what changes are occurring and be able to put our designs to the best use possible. The images that we've gotten as a city are a three-inch pixel resolution, which are a little bit more refined. It's a lot, provides a lot more detail and a lot more clarity to what we're seeing. It actually allows us to get a lot more detail in the office. So in some cases, we might not even have to go out to that individual site, so it can potentially save us a trip, which is beneficial. Overall, staff is recommending the hybrid model. And so what this would be is it would be a three-inch pixel resolution within city limits, and then a six-inch. limits and then a six-inch pixel resolution for the remainder of the MPO boundary, which extends out, I believe, two miles. The third item is the pavement management update. This is something we end up doing about once every four years. Last time we did this was in 2018 and this was done entirely with local funds. At the time, it was not eligible for federal funding. However, in the past, it has been eligible for federal funding. The federal funding was eligible for classified roads only. Those are road, more major roadways, your Colombias, your Washingtons, 17th Avenue South, 32nd Avenue South, the, the wider, busier roads. The local streets, however, those are 100% city funded. Overall, it's likely that with the amount of federal funding available, that would be offset by that funding that's available through the transit authority. There's still likely going to be some additional funds needed from the city. Fortunately, in our six-year CIP, we do have funding shown for our pavement management in 2022. This would likely need to be shifted potentially to 2021 or considering what the MPO ends up looking at for their work plan activities, we may need to do some adjustments there. But this is something that we're planning for and something that we may be able to make some adjustments for. And with that, staff is recommending approving the prioritized list of projects and submitting them to the, the MPO for consideration and inclusion in their 2021-2022 Unified Planning Work Program.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko, any comments or questions, thoughts? Ms. Mock?
Could you go through, so the pavement management update, that one really helps inform our streets and which roads to prioritize for maintenance so that we can prevent more expensive construction and rehabilitation? Can you shed some light on that?
Certainly. So the pavement management program itself, this ends up allowing us a pavement condition index of the roadway and more recently, we had our International Roughness Index, essentially how bumpy is the road. These two different factors allow us a reconnaissance level idea as to the condition of our roadways all the way down to each of our local streets so that we can better prioritize keeping the good roads in good shape and prioritizing the roads that may need a little bit more repair as well. So it allows us that, that benefit. The nice thing with pavement management and keeping good roads in good condition is it's, you know, the old saying, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. A lot of times, a rehabilitation, you might be looking at $75 to $100 per foot of roadway versus if we were to reconstruct it, you might be looking at $600 or $700 for that same foot.
Thank you very much, I'll move approval.
Moved by Mock, is there a second? Second by Dockler? Mr. Krinko, I've got a quick question. Are they going to put the, will the MPO put all three of these out for RFP?
That is correct.
Is there any favoritism? Can we play favorites trying to find local companies? For example, on the aerial imagering, imagery using LiDAR, I know there are companies in Grand Forks that can provide that?
Overall, there are federal funds that are associated with that, so it does have to go through the DOT request for proposals and request for qualifications.
But at least local companies will have their own shot at it, correct?
Correct, they do have the opportunity to apply for it and submit a proposal.
So this for Mr. Phelan and the mayor, the City of Grand Forks has been contracting for bird mitigation out at the Sloughs for two years now and neither time have we put that out for RFP. And we're hiring a company that's not local to Grand Forks to do that? Knowing full well that there are companies within the City of Grand Forks where we're trying to provide a unmanned aircraft synergy here, I think for future, I, it's probably too late for this year since it's already ongoing, but I would suggest for future years, those contracts, although I know that the dollar amount means that we, doesn't have to go out for RFP, I think we should be giving local companies a shot to provide that service. This is just my opinion. There's no right or wrong to that, I just believe we should.
Council President Sandy, I think that's a very good point. I think, and Lisa Botan is back to our Assistant Waterworks Director and I think Melanie's online. I think when we got into that, that company was probably one of the leading edge firms that were doing that with that Hawk, as I recall, and it's been really successful in bird mitigation. But I concur with you that it's been, like you said, a couple of years, successful years and there's probably others that have gotten to the leading edge too, so we'll, we'll follow up that for next year.
And perhaps they'll win the RFP, I have no problem with that, I, I just think we should make it open to others, so. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, David. Item 2.5, Red River Bio Refinery Waste Water Charges, Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, we're back talking about the Red River Bio Refinery and I'm happy to report that things are going pretty well with the startup. As we were last hearing, you guys, we approved an emergency order that I think runs out on October 8th and things have gone well. So this evening, we also have Brittany Oster and we have Lisa Botan and Melanie Parby's on the line for the city staff. Sean Gaddis here for ME2S Nexus, who did a lot of the financial reporting. Tony Hodney, the plant manager for Red River Bio Refineries here in, I think Keshaf Rapal, the principal in charge for Red River Bio Refiners on, online too. So I think this is a, we talked a lot about inspections, this is, I think, a good example of doing regulatory compliance, working with the state of North Dakota and trying to find a way to yes on certain things, whether it's during startup or then now looking at these charges, we've, we've worked as a team to get to, to hear today. I just, as I said, things have gone well, I just want to give you just a general update, the startup has gone well. We're working at charges from the spring through July. If you look at August, September and going into October, things have gotten back to normal, so we're not anticipating having to come back to, to look at additional charges, that's why we're trying to put a period here in, at the end of July as part of that. One of the big concerns that we've had is currently right now, Todd Metelski is not here, he's your wastewater treatment plant supervisor and has done a terrific job behind the scenes making things happen. We are, last time I spoke with him last week, we're ta, we're taking the full flow into the, from our wastewater system is going through our wastewater treatment plant and is being direct discharged through our disinfection system. So that's good news, that we're taking all the flows and we're not diverting to the wastewater treatment lagoons. As you recall, back this spring, we had these large loads that transpired into charges. Significant percentage of that flow had to be diverted to the wastewater lagoons because it would have been, it would have inundated our wastewater treatment plant in an unkind way. And so we diverted a lot of that flow this spring to our wastewater lagoons, hence people commented about odors. I think the odors have gone away and I, we asked again, Mr. Metelski, how are things going? We do have to discharge from those lagoons starting, you know, late this fall through the winter and things have seemed to correct themselves out of our lagoons. So we anticipate being able to meet our wastewater discharge permit parameters that we have with the state of North Dakota. So that's, that's a lot of good news, I don't want to jinx the City of Grand Forks by saying that, but if you were here in May or April, you would have wanted to be where we are today. So we're, we're all thankful that we are here today and a positive solution with that. Along the way, I just want to, I just was reading the, the motion and if we get to this motion, if you want to move it forward, I just want to make one edit as we go through this. It says, approve removing strength and excess surcharge fees for the Red River Bio Refinery from March to July 2020. And then I would put this in there, and charge Red River Bio Refinery in the amount of $582,122 and the rest can go there. It kind of read the way that I didn't want it to read, so if I can make that edit on there. I would also add on to the motion, subject to final review and approval of our city attorney as, as part of the motion. Again, I talked about the startup has gone well. Mr. Hodney is here in person, if you want to ask him any questions on that, that's, those are all great notes. We did discuss last time that their offer was that they really wanted us to take a look at our charges. Our charges are meant to charge industries when they're, when they're all started up, when their pretreatment is acclimated, those are, those charges. And as we discussed, we've discussed ad nauseam here that their pretreatment system wasn't fully functioning, wasn't fully together, the startup occurred COVID-related and they, they emitted or distributed to us a high-strength wastewater that we would never have anticipated happening, but it is what it is. Not only were we able to kind of get to where we are from a treatment perspective and a discharge, but it associated with a lot of fees that we can charge on that. So that's, they wanted us to contemplate that, so we've done that. My only past experience was, and it was kind of reading the minutes, it was a flashback to 2007, RDO Foods had a problem with their anaerobic digester, the liner broke and it released a lot of high-strength wastewater to our system. That city council at that point in time did provide grace in a similar way to what we're, we're asking today with Red River Bio Refinery. So that, that's our latest case that we have had, have done that due to a pretreatment failure, we'll say with an industry. So it's, it's not the same, but it's similar and I think the methodology that we've come to is a similar method to what we charged RDA, RDO Foods back in the day too. What we're asking for is on, on the, one, two, on the third page, there's a, there's a chart and as similar to RDO, they know and that we need to pay all the base fees, they need to pay all their flow fees, those are not being discussed, these are just the surcharge fees that we're, we're discussing. What we're proposing is that our, in this case, Red River Bio Refinery would, would pay the $140,833 if what they would have, should have paid under their permit to, you know, cover the debt service, cover the operation of our facility, all those kinds of things, that's $140,833. We worked with our staff and our consultants on what was the incremental cost from the operations perspective, from electricity to chemicals to overtime to third-party support, whether that's with A2S or with, with the city attorney. And we relied at a, at a figure of approximately $348,000. Had some discussions with Mayor Bochensky, also with city council leadership and Sandy and, and Mock, and we did mark it up 10% because there's some unknown things that we didn't capture. We did add a 10% markup, $53,000. So we arrived at what we think is that the cost to serve them, including the increment amount plus the contingency, $588,122. The total amount over that time period is $1,384,658. So what we're asking you to do is suspend or not bill $796,536, which are a part of those industrial surcharges in a similar fashion to what we did with RDO. If you looked at the RDO, they had to, they had to make sure they got their liner up and going, that they had staff that was properly trained and they did all the right things and, and we never had to come back and do any clawbacks on, on their amount, so. And similarly, that, those are the numbers, it is a significant amount of money moving forward. Other folks are here to answer, we think it's a fair and reasonable conclusion of this, we think it's within the city council's authority to grant the suspension of those fees moving forward and our, our costs are covered. The citizens of Grand Forks have, have not subsidized this industry with all that's gone on and we think we're going to be able to meet our discharge permits here at the end, between now and the end of the year and into the new year. With that, we have lots of people to ask, answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Mr. Weber? One difference between now and 2007 is COVID and the fact that there's a lot of federal money floating around to deal with COVID-related expenses. Have, have those been exhausted by the refinery?
I would say we got COVID-related expenses, but they've been primarily to government, government entities. I'll ask Mr. Hodney if he's aware of any COVID-related things, but I, I'm not aware of any.
Evening. So as far as any type of COVID-related government dollars, I'm not aware of anything that we could utilize for this particular charge for the facility right now, but there could be something available, nothing that we're aware of.
That's mainly been payroll related and programs of that sort, okay.
Mr. Phelan, I've, I got a question. The strength surcharge, what is the purpose of the surcharge?
Council President Sandy, the, the intent of the surcharge is to make sure treatment plants are, are designed for flow and they're designed for qualitative treatment. And so really, the surcharge is to ensure that we allocate a certain amount of our treatment plant is meant for treatment related, not for, just for hydraulic flow. And so we want to account for that, whether it's the citizens of Grand Forks, commercial, industries have a specific notate where we want to make sure we're charging them to treat their high-strength wastewater. And so that surcharge is our ability to extract additional revenue for the cost that it takes to treat that in that we do nitrogen, oxygen demand and then suspended solids. Those are the three categories that we can extract additional revenue from industries for the treatment of their, because their treatment is just beyond flow, it's also the strength is really a significant portion of what we're doing. Specifically, when Red River Bio Refinery, when they were just starting up, they were discharging in smaller batches, so their batches weren't a whole lot of volume, but there was a lot of strength coming our way. And so just to charge on the hydraulic flow would not have captured the, the total cost of treating that wastewater.
If I may, yeah, Mr. Weber? Some of the COVID-related issues, if I remember correctly, had to do with equipment, the ability to get a hold of some essential equipment, some personnel and taking a different refuse stream than it'd originally been intended. How have those things changed since, since then? What, what's our current situation and our situation moving forward with equipment, personnel and refuse stream?
I'll have Mr. Hodney answer that question. I think from the City of Grand Forks' perspective on, on behalf of that, I think they've worked hard to go to a second plan to get a startup firm here from the United States to help start up this particular plant. They've worked hard in getting the equipment here as quickly as they can with all the distribution delays with, with COVID-related moving forward. They have hired staff and I think they have a third-party firm that's operating, so they've been able to hire operators moving forward. So I think they have made, I suspect and Mr. Hodney probably can confirm this, they've spent a lot of money, probably more than they anticipated on the startup of this particular facility because of COVID. My guess is also related to COVID and other reasons, they've spent a lot more on capital investment on this facility too. So I think they're all in trying to get this thing to work and it, I'm sure it hasn't worked exactly how they wanted it also.
Councilmembers, the, so specific to the question on what's kind of happened or transpired in the, in the meantime with COVID, Todd kind of framed it up pretty well, but when European travel ban took, took effect end of March, early, mid-March there, it was right during the time that the plant was being commissioned, that our entire wastewater system was designed by a European outfit that was to provide engineering and startup support throughout that, the whole duration of startup. Because of that, there was very limited wastewater specialty folks in, in the U.S. that we, we were able to look out or reach out to like we did. We did find one group that had bandwidth to come support at that time, contracted them and it was a four-month time for them to get our equipment, not only for them to understand it, but for them to put that online, get it lined out. And in that same time, they were doing training with our, all of our folks, we've actually added individuals per shift to be additional wastewater focused positions to support the facility. And then we also reached out to a second third-party group which specializes in anaerobic digesters for that commissioning and support because of the same reason, there was not the European startup support, engineering startup commissioning support available. So all of that has transpired, as Todd kind of alluded to, that was quite, quite costly to get that done in order to shift and have additional groups not only learn our systems, but then be able to, to support it. So, but that's all underway and if you've seen our actual operating wastewater discharges, but we've, we've been able to march down right in compliance with all of our temporary permitting and improved significantly during that entire commissioning process.
We've, we've been very excited about Red River Bio Refinery coming to Grand Forks and it sounded like fantastic economic development for, for the community. And there, these were some unfortunate, you know, unavoidable circumstances. And I don't want, a good new corporate citizen in the community, we don't want to kick you when you're down. On the other hand, we're hoping that you have many, many profitable years here.
Yeah.
Is there some way to structure a waiver at this time, but that during good years, that could be addressed in some fashion?
I don't think I even understood what you were asking.
If we cut you the break now, can that be paid back in future years?
I'll leave that to Keshav to weigh in on. He's on the line right now.
Was that clear, Mr. Sandy?
That was clear.
Very good.
Thank you.
I was trying to be slick the first time.
Cheryl, Greg, I think Keshav should be on the line. Hopefully he can, heard the question and can answer on behalf of Red River BioRefinery.
Thanks.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, so this Keshav Rajmore from Red River BioRefinery, just want to address a question from the council member regarding financing this over some future years. You know, to what Paul did earlier in terms of the investment and impact that it's had us over the past few months from a budget standpoint on building up the refinery. We did look at a number of different programs out there from a COVID perspective. We did go to the state of North Dakota, both the Commerce Department, Bank of North Dakota, as well as some of the larger programs that are out there for the industry and the ethanol business as well. And in all those cases, we weren't able to come up with any sort of program that made sense for us. And one of the challenges we have right now is that we haven't invested quite significantly over the bulk of what we had anticipated in spending, and therefore we've carried quite a bit of, I guess, burden in terms of investment in building up the facility itself. So in terms of structuring something out into the future, you know, we can certainly think about it, but it's a significant, we're already significantly behind where we are right now, just given the influence over the past six months or so, much like anybody who's in the area. And so our intent, we're working with the city here, but it's making sure that we did start off my foot as good corporate citizens. We are hopefully paying our share based on analysis, things that are done, so we are asking to cover all the costs and do all that. And we think that's appropriate, and we have worked fairly well with the city on that as well.
Mr. Weber, does that answer your question?
I think they're asking nicely.
And as has been the case with all of our items this evening, we're just making a recommendation for consideration next week and final approval next week.
Mr. Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Vean.
I'd just like to add something. You know, this refinery that they built is kind of like a one-of-a-kind, and it's really unfortunate with all the circumstances that have happened to date to have these kinds of problems. And I really appreciate what the staff has done to try to kind of give some breaks and get this, the amount, I guess, refined and down to what it is. But I still feel like I wish there was another way that we could try to lessen the blow on this one. And I don't know what that is. And I would like to maybe hopefully take some time between now and council to see if there were some other alternatives beyond what's already been done, because I think they've done a good faith effort to try to find a solution. But for some reason, I guess, it just feels right that we should be looking for something more, and I hope we get a chance to do that between now and council.
That was the answer I wanted to come up with.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vean. Yes, Mr. Cavani?
Just a quick question. So I appreciate the methodology that was used to come up with that number, but I'm just curious, the $700,000, what would that have gone towards? Would that be a reserve? Would that be?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Cavani, we would have a, we would probably have a significant surplus. We would have much more anticipated revenue coming in on, from the industrial surcharge on the wastewater side. When we pondered, you know, it certainly could be set aside in a future capital fund, some of the additional revenue that we're going to receive that we wouldn't anticipate, let's call it the $700,000. The one thing I would ponder, you know, we did, as I noted, you know, when the flow was really this high strength, we did divert a significant amount of that to our lagoons. And the lagoons are very passive in their treatment. Obviously, it's time and space and sunlight that does a lot of magic. Thank you, Mother Nature. And so with that process, there wasn't a lot of additional expense, if you will. The expense would have come if we weren't, we would have had this wastewater trapped in our lagoons and we couldn't discharge it to the Red River. That was our biggest concern this spring. I think we're going to be okay on that end. So it really would go to our revenue side. We would demonstrate that we probably have a more significant surplus in the wastewater fund than we anticipated.
I think, Mr. Phelan, the biggest cost on this was the political cost of all of us having to take heat when it smelled so ferociously bad this spring. And I can't be the only one that took 5,000 phone calls. Yes, Mr. Weber?
This puts it in different light for me, that we're not suddenly going to be incurring an expense that's not being covered, we're simply giving up an unexpected revenue stream through the source of a fine. I'm not interested in profiting from the company's misfortune. And so I appreciate Mr. Cavani's reframe there. I still agree with Mr. Vean, if there's something that can be looked at, because those fines are in place for a reason, but that's an important reframe. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve for consideration next week, but of course, but at this time, approve the staff recommendation along with those revisions that you indicated at the beginning, Mr. Phelan.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by MOC?
Mr. Sandy, I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Weigl.
Mr. Phelan, I know Mr. Weber mentioned that it's essentially money just coming in. And my knowledge of the water system is very, very minor, but what was our capacity during this time that these surcharges and whatnot were coming in? I mean, were we higher in capacity than normal?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Weigl, I would say on the strength side, this came in the spring, and a lot of times on the wastewater system, you could get a lot of inflow and infiltration, so we probably had significant flow just because we were having a flood at the same time. There's cracks in wastewater pipes and water gets in, so we would have had a pretty high flow. At the same time, Red River BioRefinery was starting up, and they weren't so much from a flow perspective, it was more of a strength. Their strength was quite enormous. And that was the big issue that we had. And we diverted a significant amount of their flow to our lagoons just because we didn't want it to go through our wastewater treatment plant, our mechanical wastewater treatment plant, to do any damage and kind of really kill the biology and do some really things where we'd have to start up our own wastewater treatment plant. So we have, they have a pre-treatment system, we have a wastewater treatment, though we have similar, we have biology that's working, and we didn't want a really large slug go through our plant and kill off a lot of our treatment capacity and have to start it all over again.
My follow-up question to that would be, does the strength then have, could it have a negative impact on the system as far as maintenance and weakening the system over time?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Weigl, that's a very good point. You want to look at long-term issues. Like I said, I discussed the lagoons, I think that's fine. Our biggest concern is meeting the discharge. We've been able to put a significant amount of that has gone through the wastewater treatment plant. I think we've captured that in these charges here. Melanie and I were discussing, there was some, there's a, the city also built a new wastewater pump station out there to serve this area to include Red River BioRefinery. And there's some wear and tear on that pump station just because of the, probably the nature of the, and the strength of the wastewater, also probably the temperature, it's a higher temperature. And so there's probably some things that have lessened the life, if you will. And so that's why we added in some additional things like the contingency. But you have to know whether it's SIM plots, pump station, or others, there's always going to be wear and tear because it's wastewater. Wastewater is pretty corrosive, it's pretty tough stuff. And so I think we've captured some of those mitigating issues that Mr. Weigl's talking about.
And Mr. President Sandy, I'll just end real quickly with just a quick statement. Recently, I've been hearing people talk regarding the things that the city does for businesses. And I would like to think we're a very business-friendly community, we do our best for businesses. But when you hear other business owners talk about, well, I heard this business, because they're renting from the city, they got behind this amount in rent, and I hear this business getting this break, and I hear this business getting this break, I think we need to look at some of these things, because while we do our best to help out businesses while we can, other businesses are starting to talk about that. And I think we can only do so much at certain times. So it's something to keep in the back of our mind when we're talking about a half million dollars here or $50,000 in rent here. It's just something we, I think we really need to think about and talk about a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Any other, anything? Hearing none, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Item 2.6, wastewater treatment plant Kaiser sledge floor compressor. Ms. Parvee?
Good evening, Council President Sandy. Tonight I have a couple of items. One is the compressor for the sledge floor. This compressor is used to add air to the recycled water to help separate the solids. Anyway, it's reached its max life capacity, and so we're proposing to purchase two of these compressors with parts and an installation. So it comes with installation and then a maintenance, a maintenance plan with it for $67,000. We did edit that today just because we had wrong information, we apologized from the company on the actual maintenance plan that they offered us. So it did increase the cost about $4,000, but that total is what the quote is for for us to replace those two compressors. We did get one other quote from Atlas Copco, which is what we currently have at the facility, although this system works a little bit better with our new SCADA system and helps us be able to manage it when we're not there at the facility.
Do we have an alternative?
The Atlas Copco is a compressor that would work as well. It was a little over $1,000 more than this particular unit. So the staff did kind of vet both of those options and suggest to go with a lower quote.
But we have to do one or the other. We can't do nothing. Very good.
We do.
Mr. Sandy, move approval.
Moved by Vean, second by Weber. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.7, Houghton blowers at wastewater treatment plant, program changes and hardware upgrades for the master control panel and local control panel. Ms. Parvee?
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. So this particular item really just has to deal with the upgrade for our TurboX blowers. They're blowers that have been used quite regularly since Red River BioRefinery has come on. They're a system that's important, they're expensive. So as you can see, in order to do this upgrade, it's posted $200,000, wish it was $2,000. We didn't have it in the budget this year, but we had talked with Mr. Phelan and asked if we could look at taking funds out of the wastewater capital, project fund 4202, which was set aside for items like this, for us to be able to continue operations and replace equipment and hardware when necessary.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weigl.
I'll move approval, but I think this just adds to my point a little bit about when we're looking at these surcharges and the fees from one of the last agenda items. I think this is something that goes into it when we're deciding what those charges should be for the Red River BioRefinery. So something to keep in mind, that we are consistently working on our stuff, and I think some of this does have implications moving forward in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. There's a motion by Weigl, second by Cavani. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.8, wastewater collection system and wastewater treatment plant drive replacement. Ms. Parvee?
Thank you. This last item for you tonight is looking at the drives that are used to operate both the lift stations as well as at the wastewater treatment plant. We do have a line item within the budget where we can purchase drives throughout the year. We have like a lift station that'll have three drives, we'll have one drive along, and then we might not replace the other two drives, but we know that it's only a matter of time that they're going to need to be replaced as well. The lift stations in particular are of concern. We should rehab them every about 15 years, every 15 to 20 years. We have been getting about 20 to 22 years out of our lift stations, but drives will fail faster than that, they just wear out faster. And so we went around and strategically looked at which drives we could replace this year to help prevent equipment from failing and callbacks for after-hours, just to keep operations and keep the lift stations in particular working. And then we're able to do that at the wastewater treatment plant, too. So we actually got really good bids and have drives to replace at the lift stations as well as at the plant for about $63,000, and that's within our budget for the 2020 year.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Parvee?
Great job getting extra years out of it. Move approval.
Moved by Cavani, second by MOC. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Last but not least, item 2.9, 2021 recycling agreement extension and longer-term strategy. Ms. Amundson?
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. The staff report provides background about the city's recycling program that began as a pilot program in 1990 and the first curbside program in North Dakota. Residents increased their recycling over 60% since 2003, and the city's program has followed the industry trend of accepting a wide variety of materials in single-sort program, with materials going to a large material recovery facilities in the Minneapolis area for sorting and shipment to various domestic and global markets. Over the past decade, we've seen how the global marketplace has changed, and most recently with China no longer accepting the full variety of plastic materials, and other countries following up with accepting, then struggling with those materials that are technically recyclable but not economically recyclable. The most challenging are plastics number three through seven. The market value of materials is down significantly from about $100 per ton to $35 per ton over the past several years. And yet our agreement has provided for 3% annual increases. The recycling program continues to be popular amongst the city's residents, and at this time of COVID-19, when our residents are spending more time at home, the recycling option is provided for a way to handle additional waste volumes with curbside collection and the drop sites. Considering all of these factors, staff recommended and the city approved the budget for 2021, including an anticipated 11% increase in the cost of residential recycling and a 5% increase for drop site recycling. And we know that even with that 11% increase, it's a competitive rate when we look at comparable programs in other regional cities. This one-year extension that we're requesting will allow for a thorough review of the potential contractor's systems and processing capabilities, to examine market forces from regional to global, to receive input from residents and policymakers, and then to arrive at a refined program and service level that can be sustained as we proceed with the request for proposals in 2021, for a three- to five-year agreement, 2022 and beyond. So with that, we request to proceed with the one-year extension as outlined in the staff report and the attached draft extension agreement, subject to review and approval by the finance department and the city attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Amundson. Questions, Mr. Weber?
I've long
I've long been a supporter of our recycling program and have even sought at different times ways to expand it. However, over the last couple of years with the trade tensions with China, the situation has changed drastically. In fact, perhaps what it's done is it's exposed some long-term truths that we chose not to see, especially in relation to recycling plastics. I think that the one-year extension, despite the increases that will go beyond inflation, this one-year extension will be necessary for us to take a hard look at what we're doing with our recycling program. And I anticipate that there'll be some tough decisions that we'll need to make, especially related to plastics and the fact that we basically are no longer recycling plastics in any meaningful way and maybe haven't for some time. But for now, I'll make a motion to support the one-year extension.
Motion by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Cavani. Comments?
Mr. Sandy, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Weigl.
How many, out of all the households in Grand Forks, how many households participate? Is there a rough percentage?
Yes. We, it ranges from about twenty-five to forty-five percent participation on a bi-weekly basis. And in surveys that we've done in the past, it appears that we've got about seventy-five percent that participate in some way, whether it's the curbside program, the drop site program, you know, do some sort of recycling. So that's, that's where it is. And that forty, you know, right around that forty percent participation on curbside is pretty standard across the nation if we look at curbside programs.
Would the, the drop site program, does that seem to be more popular than the, than the curbside?
The curbside program lends itself to some, some really good product. And so that is something that is, you know, pretty good participation. At the same time, they use the drop sites as a backup as well when they have a lot of quantity. The drop sites are a little bit more of a challenge in terms of contamination. And yet, our drop sites have really expanded mainly, as you would imagine, with cardboard.
Perfect. Yeah. And that's what I'm most familiar with personally. Obviously, there is concerns when, when we've got anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five percent of the population using it and then another sixty to seventy-five or whatever that percentage might be subsidizing it for people that are using it. So I think it is something we'd need to have a conversation about on what this program looks like and if there's a better way that the program can go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Ms. Amundson, I do have one question because I've been trying to figure out the finances on this eleven percent, five percent, and it doesn't make sense to me. Because who, who covers the five percent increase in the drop sites? It has to be covered by the residences, right?
Yeah. So this is, the drop site program and the curbside residential is all figured into the overall cost to the resident. And so, you know, the fee that we pay waste management is, you know, a fixed fee per resident. Multifamily is as participating. The drop sites are also a supplemental, so they're all figured into that, into that budget. And so the overall increase for the recycling budget would be nine percent then.
The overall, so as an individual, I'm gonna see an eleven percent increase?
Yes. It goes from, well, we will see that we did not have any increases in the sanitation fees for next year. And we were able to do that. We were looking at that in terms of COVID-19 and what the effects were gonna be on the residences next, next year as we talked about.
I'm still trying to figure out where the money comes from to cover the drop sites.
So the drop sites and the curbside residential is all figured into one program, and that comes from fees for refuse and recycling.
Right. You said, so eleven percent. My, my personal increase is eleven percent to cover my share of the increased eleven percent cost for the residential.
If we look at our cost of service, that's, that's what it will be for next year, yes.
Right. So who covers the five percent cost increase for the drop sites? Where does that revenue come from?
So that, that is built into our cost of service, and that is spread across, based on a percentage of participation between residential and multifamily and some commercial is how we figure that into the cost of service.
So my eleven percent increase covers the increase for my resident plus the increase for the drop sites?
So when we figure the user class for the residential, like the single-family residential, we're figuring what it costs to do the curbside, but then also a portion of the drop sites figuring that they use part of the drop sites as well.
Got it. That makes sense. Okay. Thank you. That I understand. I have been, well, I wasn't a proponent of recycling as was witnessed several years ago when Mr. Grant Strand and I had difference of opinion related to recycling. However, I took up recycling at that time because I figured I should try to set an example. And if the city is going to charge people for recycling, I better get to recycling. And so I have been recycling for several years now. I find it quite a pain, but I do it because I think it's important. I am a little based upon the studies that Mr. Weber's interns did for the city. I am very concerned about the finances for our recycling program, knowing full well that our recycling program is subsidized by less wealthy people. The wealthy folks in our community, the people that do better, are bigger consumers, and they do more. They recycle more. And we know that. That is fact. And the areas of town where low to middle-income housing recycle less, yet they pay the same amount for the recycling program. In my opinion, that's not fair. I would like to see us take this next year to study not only how and what and when. I think we should take a very look, hard look at if. Because I think I'm not going to be supportive of continuing a program where this is the way the finances are figured out. So, and that's, we didn't know all of this information in the past. We continue to learn more. We're learning more about the fact that plastics aren't being recycled the way we all thought they were. And so I'm, I think we should get public input. We should talk to people. We should think. We should listen. And we should try to figure out if we're going to keep our recycling program, how to provide an equitable program so that people that are recycling are paying to do so. But yes, Mr. Weber.
Just a quick point of clarification. That excellent study that was done by the student intern, I was not involved with her supervision.
Okay. I stand corrected. Thank you. Who, was that just an intern within the city?
It was an intern with Public Works, if I remember correctly. I was not involved.
Yes. Yes. It was, it was a student with UND through Earth Systems, Science and Policy.
Science and Policy, right. They dug through thousands of pounds of recycling. It was. That was a great study. Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Mac.
How are we gonna make sure we take this year to actually engage public input and financing options? Is that something that Public Works is leading? Is that something that someone else is leading? I'm just wondering so that we actually use this year wisely.
Right. Because if we get to this time next year and there's no plan, I'm voting no. Just so everyone knows.
Yeah. I, I think we can progress through, we've, we've done this before. And so I think we can progress through and find most of the answers that you're looking for. In addition, take input from all the stakeholders and make sure that we include that.
I would recommend an occasional update.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add, Council President Sandy, it'll have to be a budget item, too. So we'd be not very smart if we came back and said we did nothing over the last six months. So we're gonna have to incorporate it into the budget, whatever. So time is of the essence the rest of this year and early next because it'll end up in Mayor Pachansky's budget, whatever he anticipates. And I think that'll be the initial part of, other than all the planning and all the stuff, it'll end up as part of a budget discussion, I think, first.
Thank you, Mr. Felent. Any other, anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Yes, Mr. Sandy. My apologies. I know it's late and we'd all like to leave. But I have a matter of some importance that I feel compelled to discuss. I look forward to one of these meetings where we do not have to talk about COVID.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
We still have a motion and a second on the floor? Okay. Is, okay. No more comments on that? Any, anything else for the good of the order? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So for the good of the order, Mr. Weigl, anything to add tonight?
No, thank you, President Sandy.
Mr. Veen? Mr. Veen, nothing to add?
Yep. Nope. Nothing to add. Sorry.
Thank you. No problem. Ms. Dockler? No? Mr. Cavani? Nothing for the good of the order? Mr. Weber, after you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. I do have an item I need to bring forward. We have an important constituency in town, the UND Student Body, important to our community, our vibrancy of our community, our local economy. At their weekly meeting last week, they passed two bills. One of those included an ask of city council that is not on our agenda. Any item not listed on the agenda has to be considered by a unanimous motion adopted by the council members present. I'm asking that, that we consider adding something to our agenda this evening so that we can discuss it quickly and then bring it forward for council consideration next week.
And so?
So I'm asking that we add to the agenda a consideration of the UND Student Body, Student Government, a request of city council.
Okay. Mr. Gosden?
Yeah, me. I'm not exactly sure what they're, what the student body, what it is. I think the first thing that happened...
I'm sorry, UND Student Government.
I think the, if there's gonna be an agenda item modification, there has to be a motion made to do so and to explain what the motion, what the agenda item, the modification is going to be to begin with. And two, you know, I think that if they're gonna bring these agenda items, it should be, it should be vetted at least at some level with a staff member that might be affected or the mayor's office or whoever. Just to, you know, Mr. Weber did state it correctly that the city code does allow for modifications upon unanimous consent of, of city council members.
Okay. So, Mr. Weber, are you bringing a motion?
Well, the motion I was intending was that we consider this, this request made by the UND Student Government. I can go into detail about what that is at this point, and I'm happy to do so. And it's my understanding that this was brought forward to the mayor and to council president. And so I was anticipating that it was going to be on this evening's agenda. But at this point, let me, if I may, read an email from student, UND Student Body President Matthew Turnus, who was not able to join tonight for some medical issues. "Our student government is full of passionate leaders," he writes, "who express concerns over the spread of COVID here in our city. As the university prepares to announce on Thursday, this Thursday, their decision to maintain their current hybrid educational model or move to online-only after Thanksgiving, I think now more than ever, it's important to consider what more we can do to show, slow the spread. Should my classmates be moved to an online-only model, I can only imagine the change in student population here in Grand Forks and with that, the change in community and business interaction. And speaking to my own speculation, this conversation might not end at Thanksgiving as COVID is fluid and doesn't necessarily celebrate the holidays. During our two-week discussion on these resolutions, our student leaders expressed the desire to see action and engage in these tough conversations. Our student Senate passed two resolutions. One, asking for a citywide face-covering policy consistent with UND, and one reaffirming our support of the city's actions regarding COVID. Students are members of the Grand Forks community. Campus and community, we are all Grand Forks. We can never truly predict what will happen next with COVID. So in taking any step to keep our neighbors safe, students on campus, and promote a healthy city, I see net benefits for us all. Presented before us is an opportunity to be leaders in action here in the state of North Dakota. Let's seize this opportunity for our classmates, our neighborhoods, our businesses, and everyone who calls Grand Forks home." And he's then listed summaries of the two resolutions. The one is essentially an ask from the UND Student Senate that the city council adopt a parallel face-covering policy to that adopted by UND. And that's the agenda item that I'm asking we consider for addition this evening for a final vote next week.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Does anyone have any comments or want to second that motion? Can you repeat the motion, Mr. Weber?
The motion is to move forward the UND Student Government's request that the city of Grand Forks adopt a parallel policy to UND's policy on face covering.
President Sandy?
Yes.
Actually, the motion should be on whether you want to amend the agenda to consider. That needs to be the first.
I meant to do it first. I apologize. Yes. That would be my first motion.
Procedurally, and that would have to be by unanimous consent by the city council.
So there's a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
I will second. This is Ken.
Second by Veen. Knowing it has to be unanimous. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 What the hell? Aye. Pardon my language. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Weigl opposes. Thank you.
That's the end of that. If I may, one final thing, just a comment then. We're currently in the nation experiencing a death toll every three days equivalent to the death toll of nine eleven. North Dakota, by various measures, is, is among the worst, if not the worst, in the nation. Our own public health officer dashboard indicates that we are at an orange level with an upward trend. And yet, for the first time in the last three committee of the whole meetings, perhaps longer, we did not have a COVID update tonight. That seems a terrible omission. I would ask that we have weekly updates on COVID brought to city council and to committee of the whole alike. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I'm sure city staff will take into consideration the request by the UND Student Senate and will make a determination as to whether it will come to another agenda. Ms. Mac, any comments? Nope. I have a couple. We're still waiting to hear about the school district, Mr. Felent, related to COVID money. No hurry. Just a point of fact. The Nissler Building did get approval, so that's exciting. So we'll be helping participate with that. It would be great, Mr. Felent or Mr. Mayor, if you could reach out to the president and ask him where they are with their study of dual credit that they were gonna bring back to us. I would appreciate that now that the Nissler Building is moving forward. I noticed that there were no city masks or no free masks sitting downstairs by the door. There's a sign that says grab a mask, but there are no masks there. So I don't know if, if they should be replenished. That would be great. And then, oh, the last thing I wanna say is thanks to Megan for nineteen years. This is our nineteenth anniversary today. So appreciate that she puts up with me. Anything else to say? Exactly. Nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Cavani, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We adjourn. Aye, or adjourn.
Aye.